Good morning, State's Right Radio. We're coming to you live from Washington DC. Right now, we have another great interview here. One of my greatest friends of all time. Eureka, California. You know, back in the 1850s, I believe that's the point they named it Eureka because they struck gold for liberty, for gold. So, right now, listening, I want to introduce you to a good friend of mine, Anthony Mantova, born and raised from Eureka, running for Eureka City Council, Ward Number One. How are you, Anthony?
Hey, thanks so much. It is great to be here. Absolutely fantastic.
Great, 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 great. Now, if we want to get started first on your candidacy, but I remember that you told me that you were a small business owner in California, or should we say Taxifor-nia?
You could absolutely say that, you know. When you live in California, you get the special situation of having to pay an extra 10% and an individual income tax. It's not much fun. It makes it tough right out of the gates. But yes, I am a small business owner. I own Mantova's Two Street Music. You can see it online at mtsmusic.com. But it's a retail music store, so we sell everything from acoustic pianos to guitars, offering guitar lessons, band instrument repair, guitar repair. And we are open every day, almost every single day of the year, except for Christmas, Easter, and Thanksgiving. The store's been around for 40 years. My brothers and I, we bought it nine years ago. And we have turned it into an oasis. People, traveling musicians, professionals, amateurs, who live in a 500-square-mile radius stretching from Portland down to Santa Rosa, all the way to Reno, they come to see our store. It's a very special place, and I'm very proud of what we've done.
Great, great, great. So, I know that you went back to California to start this business, and how's it been? I mean, I, 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 I mean, is it really booming in your side of the business of music and music equipment in that side of California? And how's it been per se, tax-wise, property-wise, and all that?
So, it is booming in the sense that I've had to work way harder than I should have to make it happen, right? The tax situation has not helped. It's interesting, you know, I have to hire two separate accounting firms. I have one accounting firm for my actual business, and they're based in Connecticut. They handle music stores, right? Then I have to hire, you'll find this very interesting, your viewers will too, I have to hire a second accounting firm just to keep up with the California regulations and the California taxes. It's that bad.
I see. No, I mean, I can imagine that bad. I remember a long time ago, people were telling me that private businesses were leaving out of California. One major company was the Buckneff Company out of San Diego. They've had it, and so they are now booming in Post Falls, Idaho. Not only that, you know, their tax structure in Idaho is better, but their regulations, environmental and labor laws are better, their right to work, so no high union influence. Has anybody approached you from a local union in Eureka to unionize your workforce?
You know, that hasn't really been an issue for me. We don't have, at our height, we had maybe seven employees, and that's going back a while. During the first few years, we had to cut back on employees. And then I only just started hiring people again. I started hiring people about three years ago. So, I'm up to, at any time, three or four positions. So, I am way under what would be considered a unionized situation. Part of the reason we're booming is we have a very big online business. So, I hired two people to work full-time on that effort. And what's great about that is I'm able to at least take part in some markets of other states. I don't have to just be reliant on California customers. And as we talk, some of the things that have been a really real challenge to business locally, the internet has helped me out big time because I'm able to take part in other markets. But to answer your question, it's interesting, the bigger players, if you, it seems to be California targets you if you have more than 25 employees. That's when the regulations really start to sink in. Things like minimum wage increases, things like having to charge customers 10 cents for every paper bag they want for the goods when they leave your store. We charge per bag. We're one of the few states to actually do that. And, you know, it's hard enough to welcome tourists, but when a tourist shows up and he's spending money in your local economy, it's, I find it embarrassing to have to say, "Oh, you want to pay 10 cents for a bag?" I mean, it's just, you know, and all the big stores have to do it. Everybody that's got 25 or more employees has to charge 10 cents a bag. And that had to do with the eventual coming ban on plastic bags. But my point of view is, why, why not just, if plastic's such a big deal, why not just use paper, you know?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I, I, I mean, you know, Washington DC where we're based, it's the same, it's the same thing, you know, they charge for plastic bags. Well, I mean, you know, if, if plastic bag is such a big deal, I'm not saying that, you know, government has to prohibit it. But, you know, I would say they could recommend to use other types of bags. A paper, or bring your own bag, or something to encourage the citizenry to do something else. So, yeah, absolutely. I mean, California is...
Just another sign of top-down. You know, that's, that's our problem. We have Sacramento, which is five hours away, and we are a huge state. I mean, when you really think of the size of California, it takes 14 hours for me to get to LA if I drive the speed limit. And you really do have to drive the speed limit because between all of the Redwood Forest in the first four hours, and then the I-5, which is packed, you really can't speed. It's 14 hours. It's what it is. We're such a huge state. And Sacramento, that's why, over the years, you've seen so many different proposals, including one that's on the ballot for this year, proposals to divide our states, to have like the state of Jefferson, or in this case, this year, we're going to be voting on breaking the state up into three. And I'm against it just because it's very poorly written. It's, when you look at the map, it's just not a good idea. But we're just very regulation-happy, and the taxes are too high. The Republican Party, I've heard, is running to repeal the gas tax, and that's been very popular locally. California puts an obscene tax per gallon of gas on people like me.
Yep. I mean, when I, when I visited California and up to San Francisco, and went down to Yosemite, and I put in some gas in my car that I was visiting, it was about maybe $40 a ga, $40 for the whole tank. It was outrageous.
Yeah, well, you're talking to me right now. I'm in Eureka, California. At this point in time, with the exception of Hawaii, we have the highest gas in the nation, not just in California, but in Eureka. This is the, this is the spot. It's the highest, right here.
Now, does the Eureka City Council create those type of tax regulation, tax laws?
No, they really don't, which it's kind of refreshing to talk about state issues with you because when I'm on the campaign trail, these issues don't, they actually don't come up. Eureka's got such deep-seated local problems that I've been focused more on illegal drugs and camping ordinances and potholes. So, yeah, no, the Eureka City Council doesn't do anything with the, they really don't do much in taxes. They actually don't charge us that much in taxes, oddly enough. There's a local state sales tax of one-third of a percent, you know, or one-quarter of a percent. And, I mean, it's kind of annoying, but it's not that much. There are fees. That's where the city gets you is fees. There's some very big fees. And they recently, I have to say, we have a city council that not only doesn't have very much depth or business experience, but it is a little bit too far to the left as well. I think most people would agree with that statement. And so, as a result, what you see is you see very good, you see ideas that sound good, but the people that are putting the ideas in place do not have a depth of experience to actually administer those ideas. And so, recently, they got together to talk about raising fees. And the fees are already high enough, but they want to raise them even more. And the problem is there's no structure in place that shows how is the fee being verified. You know, if you take, I guarantee you, you go to a state like Texas or Idaho, states that are killing us right now in terms of taking our people away. Those states, if you were to look at their fee structure, you would be able to get an accurate idea of why the fee costs what it does. And just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, if you want to build a house, I've talked, I'm talking to people right now, my treasurer for my campaign, he's trying to build a house, and every step of the way, he's having to pay these outrageous fees. And the fees are huge, and they're, they're, they're just too high. I mean, just common sense dictates they're too high because we have maybe a couple people in each department of our city. And so, you, you take three or four people divided by $20,000 in fees just to construct a house, and what do you get? What do you get? You get some serious theft. It's what you get. So, and that's, that's playing out over and over again at the county and city level. And that's, that's the really ugly, that's, that's the sort, it's not really officially a tax, but that's where it's happening. And that's where I want to stop. I want to get in there, get those fees lowered. Get, not, not just about getting lowered, because, yeah, I win an election, I get them lowered, then somebody else wins an election and raises them. I want to create a structure that explains the fee. Create a structure that says, "Here's why the fee is what it is," so that the public understands why they're paying what they're paying.
Okay. No, I understand that. A couple questions that will follow to that. You, you have in your campaign website that you want more business owners in public office, in public service. Who are these politicians now in the Eureka City Council or the Humboldt County? Who are these? Are they business owners? Are they, are they lawyers?
No, they're, they're not. One of them works part-time in the school. And I, I love teachers. My mom's a teacher. Teachers are great. But at the end of the day, I just have to tell you, she works in the school as a TA, as an assistant. So, she's only working a few hours at her actual job. And, you know, she's married to somebody that has a, that has a job, and that's fine. But that's one person. You got another one who works for a nonprofit. Okay? And you and I both work for nonprofits. We know how that goes. You've got somebody else who works in the medical field, and you know what? His name's Austin. I actually, I thought he would be better on some of the drug issues that are impacting our area. I thought that he would be good on the homeless because at least he would understand addiction and stuff. I was very disappointed. He has done nothing but support bad ideas. And then we've got the person that's in my ward, a gal named Marion, of the five. She does the best job. Even though I don't agree with her on everything, she does a good job because she asks questions, she reads everything before she signs it. And if she doesn't like the answers that her staff give her, she drills down and gets the right answers. So, she's great. And then you've got somebody who's a pastor. She's a pastor for a church. And she's been quiet as a mouse for the last year or so on the city council. And, you know, I sat down with her and had coffee the other day, and I said, "Why are you so quiet on there? Because you're, you're obviously very intelligent." She might be the smartest, she might be the smartest woman up there. Mostly women. She might be the smartest woman on the council, but she's so quiet. And basically, I think she was just trying to learn the job for the first year. So, those are the five. I, I, I mean, you know, those are the five. There's not much in the way of business experience. There's not much in the way of depth. There's not much, there's just not much.
No, no, no. That's typically, you know, even in state politics or federal politics, that they're mostly teachers, farmers, and lawyers. That's all they are. And I've said it a million times, if you want to start in local politics or state politics, you've got to find business owners because, small business owners, because they know, they, they know what to do. I mean, they, they, they run a business, they run a budget, they run everything, so they can, they can, they can adapt their business practices into a city practice and create a better budget than a lawyer, a farmer, or a teacher. I've always said, I've always said that those are the worst professions you could ever have in politics because teachers only want money for education that goes into the pack, into the pockets of the teachers' union. Farmers only want their subsidies checked, and lawyers just want to create new laws to cover their own behind. So, the main, the main, the main profession that we need in city councils is business owners, and you're the perfect example of that, Mr. Mantova. You are a small business owner who is not struggling now, but who has been struggling in noticing all your, all your posts and all the stuff that you've done. And I am so glad that we have a business owner, a proven of leadership, that is going to do something, and hopefully can do something. Maybe not in the first year, not in the second year, but maybe the third year, when everything gets done. And I just, I just commemorate you that, you know, you are finally taking this step because we need people like you in politics, small business owners.
Well, there's one more thing too I got to add. This is something that gets overlooked big time. The city staff. Let's talk about city staff just a moment because it matters. Every city has them. Our city staff, I think, are pretty good. You know, I made a decision. I'm getting so much information because I'm running a campaign, but I'm also learning the job myself. I'm sitting down with people that, I'm sitting down with people that have been there before, so I'm learning. And so, I hear good and bad about the staff. But I made the decision to take all that information and put it on the shelf, so to say. I'm not going to make any decisions about staff because it's not fair to them. So, but here's what's happening. When you have a city council made up of people that don't have depth, it's the city staff that have to run the city. And so, what happens is, it's not that the city staff are being bad and being naughty, but they're having to run the city by themselves. So, what they end up doing is, the meetings are hilarious because every two weeks is when the meetings are. The city staff basically run the city. They present an agenda of what they think is important, and the city council votes on it. You see, that's not how it's supposed to work. The city council's supposed to show some leadership and some initiative, and it's supposed to show, hey, here's the direction that the voters want. But that's not what we have. Every, it's every single two weeks, in my view, the agenda is staff-driven when it should be leadership-driven. Because you know how it is, if you've got a good employee, he might only be a good employee if he's got a good boss. You take a good employee and give him a crappy boss, you get a crap employee ultimately. And that's, you know, that's no fault of the employee, you know. That's the fault of the manager. That's the fault of the boss. So, how many, you know, taking, taking your example of what kind of quality of leadership we're getting in all of our cities, the way to really look at it is what's going on with the staff? Because if they've had no leadership for a 10- or 20-year period, you're going to have all kinds of deep-seated problems that are costing taxpayers extra money. You're going to have all kinds of deep-seated problems like, like what we talked about with fees. You're going to have all kinds of deep-seated problems that will pass through a balance sheet just fine because they've all been worked out. I mean, the staff have a whole year to figure out how to, you know, how to, how to make it work. And again, they're not being deceptive. They're just, they're just doing their jobs. They have to, they have to get a paycheck. They have to run the city. They're doing their jobs. I'm not blaming them. But when you have bad leadership, or in Eureka's case, no leadership, for several years, I'm very excited to get involved with that budget process. I know how funny that sounds, but I, I have to know how much money is going in the wrong directions, and I really need to find out what's going on with our town.
Oh, no, no, no. What you just told me boggles the mind that city bureaucrats are making plans, and the city council, which is the people that, they've been elected, are being elected, are just saying, "Oh, yeah, oh, this is okay. Ah, $20,000 for this, for this, for this cleanup street." Ah, you know, what the heck? And that really boggles the mind that, you know, it's the city bureaucrats and not the city council. Oh, no, that really, that really has got to stop. I mean, that's, that's, that's beyond despicable. But what can I say? It's California, and I hope that we can change it with you, Mr. Mantova.
Thank you so much.
But, all right, no, that's good. And then your last point is that you want to take the criminals and the drug addicts and the homeless people off the streets. How do you intend to do that? Because, I mean, a two-part question. These homeless people, are they Humboldt County native-born, or are they coming from other parts?
Okay, I'm glad you got to that, even though we're talking mostly about taxes because that's the big problem. That's the big problem in California. You look at San Francisco. We actually, San Francisco has an app. It's a free app you can get, showing you where all the piles of poop are on a given day in San Francisco. That's how bad it is. And that's the real thing. That's an app. You can get it for your phone. So, there's, it's interesting. I was watching the mayor's race. There's five people that were, maybe it's less now, but there are five people running for mayor of San Francisco, and they're all sharing their ideas. And I tuned in. I mean, San Francisco's five hours away from me. I wanted to see what the ideas were, and they all had the same ideas. All their ideas were the same. They were more money for homeless, more money for encampments, more money for this, more money for that. So, how do you do it? It's a multi-faceted approach, and I'm going to tell you why. The only thing the city can do to show its determination is to use ordinances. The reason I say that is we're so tightly regulated from Sacramento, there's actually not a lot of free movement that a city can do in California. We're very regulated. You know, if we, it can be so bad that if we take a step in the wrong direction, we lose lots of money in grant funding, right? So, you have to be very strategic in what you do. And one of the few strategic areas that we can still operate without any interference is with our ordinances. So, for example, Berkeley has an ordinance that says that you can't leave unattended bags on the curb side. Now, that little ordinance, which was easy to pass, gives law enforcement the tools it needs to keep homeless people moving if they're loitering in the business district. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
So, ordinances is a big key. In Eureka, we have several very good ordinances. Because the people got outraged, we got these ordinances in place. We have a panhandling ordinance. Before we had the panhandling ordinance, every single street corner had somebody begging for money. Okay? We have a no-camping ordinance. Those two ordinances are great. You see, I've become a thought leader on the homeless locally because I said we have to stop using the word homeless, and we need to adjust the microscope and look a little deeper. The homeless are made up of three groups, okay? They're made up of, 15% are people down on their luck who really do need help. Now, to put, to make that very clear, somebody that is in that 15% category, they might own a vehicle. They might have a job, but they don't have a home. So, these poor folks are just trying to make it. And what they'll do is they'll go work their job, they'll get in their car, they'll drive to the Eureka Rescue Mission or St. Vinnie's or somewhere where they can get fed, and they'll get a meal, and they'll enjoy that meal in the privacy of their own vehicle. Okay, we got people like that, and they need help. They, my heart goes out to them. We got to help. Okay. Then the group number two is about 25%. Group number two are the mentally ill. Okay? Now, that's backed up by studies. There have been numerous studies that say that any group of homeless, 20 to 25% are mentally ill. So, I'm very comfortable saying that. Okay. So far, we're up to 40%. You follow?
Yeah.
Group number three is the problem. Group number three are criminal drug addicts. Group number three is dangerous. Group number three, if you give them money, they will go buy heroin. They care more about heroin than a house. They care more about meth than a bed. They have no interest in housing. They have no interest in a job. And what's really frustrating is I'm going up against do-gooders who want to give these people houses. California has two big problems. They have a housing-first model, and they have a needle exchange ordinance. The housing-first model works great for group number one. It is a disaster for group number three because what ends up happening is if you, if you set up a homeless community, if you set up a tent city, if you fill it with people who are down on their luck, that's great. But the moment you put one criminal drug addict in that community, he ruins the whole community because criminal drug addicts prey on people down on their luck. It is so bad. If you're down on your luck, and you, you imagine you're in your little car, you're in your little, your little scooter, and you pull up to the rescue mission, you don't just walk in like a, like an adult. You look through your, your little window, and you make sure there's no criminal drug addicts out on the street to absolutely, before you sneak in for a meal and sneak back out. It's that bad. And so, what do we do about it? What we have to do is through several different points of contact, we have to contact the criminal drug addict, whether it's from police, regular citizen. We have to make contact and say, "Hey, you can't live your criminal lifestyle here." You can get involved with any one of these many charities that we have, but you can't live your lifestyle here. Because if we, if we continue to give criminal drug addicts money, if we continue to let them grow and invite their friends, build up their own sub-community, we're going to turn in San Francisco. We're going to turn into LA. We're going to go that direction. So, I've become a thought leader, I've become a thought leader recognizing that we have to make this turn, and we have to define. You can't solve a problem if you can't define it. That's the point. And so, the needle exchange is the other big problem. And this is happening in every single coastal county in California. The more conservative-minded inner counties have been very smart not to let it happen, but we're doing it. The way the needle exchange works is if you're an addict, you go to the needle exchange center with a bucket full of needles, and you say, "Hey, I got 50 needles here. I need 50 clean ones." And they give you 50 clean ones. Okay? It has been a disaster. Our parks, our streets are covered in needles. Parents can't let their kids go out and play because they're afraid of getting stabbed by a needle. You know, in my, in my announcement, in my campaign announcement, I decided, I'm not just going to do an announcement. I'm more than that. I went to the public, the county library. I went to the county library, and I held a two-hour cleanup. We found over four syringes and eight bags worth of trash at the library. And what's really heartbreaking about that is there's a park there. Kids play there. And there's just needles all over the place. So, these are very, these are very bad ideas. Giving criminal drug addicts money and housing. These are very bad ideas, giving criminal drug addicts free needles because it's exacerbated the problem we have out here. And so, I'm facing against the wind. I'm marching in a very different direction than the rest of the coastal state. And when you think of California, you got to think of it that way. It's the coastal counties that all share the Pacific Ocean. They're the problem. They are the problem. Everything inner-coastal is just like the rest of the country. It's ready for a change. It's ready for smart, common-sense policies. But it's these coastal counties that are messing it up for everybody else. And of course, that's where all the population is, you know. But that's just a quick, I mean, I can go on for hours, but that's just a quick understanding of what I'm dealing with. It's not, taxes are important, but they're not as important as the bodies I have to step over to get to my work site.
No, I totally, I totally understand, and that is one major issue that I've always seen on your webpages and posts and all that, the issue with homeless people and, I don't know, is homeless the appropriate term now? Or have they changed that term?
Well, yeah. They're trying to call it houseless because they're trying to rate, they're trying to give dignity to the homeless. But, but again, I personally don't like to say homeless because what are you talking about? Are you talking about people down on their luck, or people that are shooting up behind my store? I don't think it's clear enough. I want to define it. I want to have several different contact points where this city says, "No. If you want to be a criminal addict, you got to leave." Another thing we can do is we can work on tackling all of the empty blighted buildings that criminal drug addicts are shooting up at. You know, we have about 50 buildings that are blighted in Eureka alone, and I have several strategies to do that. But, but that's the point, is it's not just any one answer. Step number one is defining the problem. Step number two is figuring out where is the problem. And then step number three is, how do we make contact with the problem? And I have answers to all three of those things. And the voters are surprised. When the voters talk with me, I get this a lot. They're like, "Well, it's everywhere, man. It's everywhere." Well, it doesn't have to be here. We're a county of 100,000 people. We can't afford to take care of, of everybody that wants to get into meth and heroin. We just can't afford it. Or if we try to afford it, we're going to turn to San Francisco.
And, and you're going to have to get a Eureka poop app.
You, you will have to. And to be honest with you, we're already there. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've had people poop on my street. I mean, it's, it's very common. We have, we have criminal drug addicts. This is another thing. Criminal drug addicts do what they want to do. They, they're not going to safely store their needles because when they shoot up, they're in the happiest place that they can get in. So, the needle just falls to the ground.
Correct.
And for public restrooms, forget about it. You have a public restroom, they're just going to use it to shoot up. So, it, it makes it, it's very important. I know this is not a fun topic, but if you are a city and you're hearing me right now, you're, you're in a city that's, that's going the wrong way, change immediately because a civilized society cannot coexist peacefully with a criminal drug addict society. And I can tell you that with real experience.
Well, Mr. Mantova, it is great to finally hear somebody that's got sensible policies, civilized policies for a great city like Eureka, California. And I hope my listeners out there, all across this great land of ours, and cities and counties that are suffering the same, that are suffering in California, please do make a difference. Please do change. Go to your city council. Go to your county council. Go to your state legislatures. It all, it doesn't start in the federal government. The federal government is not, that's not their responsibility. It's the state, it's the county, it's the city. So, get out there like Mr. Mantova. Mr. Mantova, I want to thank you very much for being here. I hope that we can stay in touch with, with campaign updates. I hope that we can stay in touch with, with campaign updates. I wish you all the best, and let's stay in touch for more, for more interviews.
Oh, yeah. Call me anytime. It's going to be a very fun race. I recently have an opponent. She's part of the Green Party, and I, she's, she's offering a very different vision of the city than I am, and maybe next time we talk, we can talk about her.
All right, great. What is your website again?
anthonymantova.com.
anthonymantova.com. Take a look at it. He's the one that's having some good policies to change your city. Change your city just like Mantova is. anthonymantova.com. Great to talk to you, and we'll be in touch.
Always a pleasure. Take care.
Thanks. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you heard it right here. anthonymantova.com. Take a look because he's the one that really makes a difference in his own city. You can make a difference just like he, to clean up, to put some order, to put some decent policies, some sensible policies in your own city. Take a look at it. Eureka City Council Ward Number One, Anthony Mantova. Anthony Mantova, anthonymantova.com. Thank you very much for listening, and I hope you tune in for more. For states' rights, always. Thank you, and good morning.